This guy has a lot of experience. And he's, he's not only done things for the public sector, but he, I believe his report said that he did 10 percent for the private sector also. So, could you just ask him to shoot, shoot something to you that you can distribute to us? What he's going to use for distribution?
And Mayor, I did have a brief conversation with him and certainly the inlet, the ICMA, it's already out there, MML, I think it's already out there as well. The cranes, certainly we can get that information about the cost of that. The, the timing, it, you will have another meeting and you can approve the expenditures as far as these other placements. Department of, I, I will need to do some research on that because that's all, all new. But that can be something that's done, again, it's going to be a couple of weeks afterwards that we can give to council and they can have that information about what it's going to cost us to place those advertisements. It's a couple of weeks later, but again, we don't have a deadline yet on this. I'm sure he, you know, if there's a fall by candidates, we're going to have them in there up until the point, the, the last possible date. So, that's something that we can always bring back to you once we get more of that information.
We didn't receive this package until this morning. Many of us work during the day, so we didn't get a chance to go through this specifically word for word. Is there a process where we can look at this for a day or so, get back with you with our comments or questions? And then possibly meet again or at the next meeting? That's why I was asking about the timing for this.
A couple of things. First of all, you can do whatever you want to do, but the longer it takes us to have formal approval, the longer that it, it's not out there. I mean, we've got the ads that are out there and there's nothing to tie it to, so...
But if we tweak it right in the first place, maybe a little bit of extra time studying it and working on it will result in a quicker process. Or a more thorough process.
My concern is that if I take individual comments from individual council members, then it may not be a consensus of council and I'm really worried about that. That's why if there's a way to get consensus tonight on this as it is and then, again, we're going to be bringing it to council to ratify at the next meeting and perhaps at that point in time, additional tweaks can, can be made, if you feel comfortable with that. If you don't, there's the option of having a special meeting if you wanted to have it out there available sooner rather than later. Or, again, we can just wait until the next meeting, but just know that there won't be anything out there that they'll have other than just the advertisement.
Other than the two gentlemen who approached us before we hired the Mercer Group, do you know if there's any candidates that have submitted or suggested that they'd be interested?
I believe that there are at least three persons who've expressed an interest already. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if any came in today or not. I'm not sure.
Are those coming into City of Troy or are they going into Mercer?
They're all going to the Mercer Group.
And has he indicated the time? Sorry, Councilman Slater?
Just from my perspective, I, I knew Friday that this would be coming today, so I made an effort to make sure that I, that I could take a look at it. I'm comfortable personally with the tweaks that were done here today and I'm ready to tell him to, to move forward and then we take a look at the document next week. I don't think we should be putting this off for another week, two weeks to proof it and do all that. I'm comfortable with what happened here tonight and I think we should be contributing here personally. That's what the study session should be for.
Councilman Teetz?
It's September fifteenth.
Number eighteen, I think it is, isn't it?
I think it is.
That's just my...
Councilman Fleming?
Mr. Fleming, could you read what you think we want on bullet point number two under experience?
What I have in hand, I was going to make sure that we had it all correctly, but in bullet point two on page fifteen, working knowledge of fund accounting and financial management, human resources management, business recruitment, and retention policies or inter, or governmental relations.
Retention practices?
Yep. Yes. Okay.
I like that. And good, just so we're on the same page, and those be on under education, professional development, that third bullet point, could you read that and tie things again?
Sure. Demonstrated continuing professional development as evidenced by professional development plan, active membership and training with the professional government organizations and/or business professional organizations, similar affiliations for continuing professional education.
The other points I had were on page sixteen under working style, people's knowledge and abilities. Maybe if you, I never talked about those at all. Point number one, point number three, and number five. Number one, saying accustomed to a community role as a leader and participant in community affairs, a person who establishes positive welcome communications with citizens at City Hall. There again, if you're in the, in the private sector, you wouldn't have had, you want someone with that skill set, but how can we say it without using the words City Hall and community affairs?
I'd take that out and just make it communications with the community.
Yeah. And then on bullet point number three, a collaborative approach to working with city council, key boards and commissions and citizen groups while attending to the separate roles of policy and administration. There, again, that's, makes it pretty specific that's probably, and certainly we want someone with those, those skills and abilities, but can you say the same thing? You know, collaborative approach and a relationship builder and consensus builder, good communicator without specifically saying council members, community group, government agencies, city council. Just, just the point. I don't know, maybe I'm the only one thinking this one.
We're not trying to get a city manager.
Yeah, but we don't want to preclude, we certainly we are, but we don't want, I know how, I've interviewed a lot of people myself and had jobs in management in the private sector. And if I looked at this, I'd say, boy, this is not, I'm going to be qualified. I want to put my resume in.
Would a qualifier statement at the beginning indicating something to the effect that what you're attempting to draw from business, government, and military, you just state your, the object of this is to draw from those communities and that the experience will be evaluated commensurate with this, some, some statement indicating that it's understanding no one will be that perfect, but these are desirable experience points, but it's not exclusive to these, mutually exclusive or something along those lines.
You know, that was attempted, a good attempt at that early on with this, but when you get to the candidate, it's, it's not restated. Some things are restated, that's not restated, so I agree with what you're suggesting.
I think something like that would be nice to have in this section as well, because it gets lost if you read it on the fourth page.
You put it right underneath the ideal candidate. Put it in the paragraph in there and stating that.
I'll just do that in case we missed it in the part before.
Yeah, because some things are restated in here. You may miss that, but why, if that's what you're looking for, you wouldn't put that under the ideal candidate?
Just so that I'm clear, where, where is it standing? I mean, I'm happy to have it repeated again. If you can tell me where that is, we can just do that verbatim and get care of that part of it if there's consensus.
Maybe page fifteen, a disclaimer right under item B, ideal candidate?
The, the language of the disclaimer is, I think, what we're looking for. Is it anywhere somewhere else? Is this the issues facing this position? Would it be under page eleven?
Yeah.
Well, certainly, the position advertising right in the middle as well.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Definitely require it, but it was, it was stated pretty well, actually.
For graduate degree, public, for business administration, seventy year leadership, private sector, military, equivalent combination. All right, so if you want to take that verbatim, put underneath the ideal candidate, we got a winner.
That's exactly.
Just, Mayor, just so that I'm clear, then, the language, prefer graduate degree in public or business, military or equivalent combination of education and experience, that language is going to be added right underneath the ideal candidate, section five.
You could work it in there somewhere. You could...
Yeah, that's, I think that's where we're at. Let's go to the bottom of the ideal candidate. Mr. Robinson, there's so many of these, I'm sure if we tell him the flavor of what we're looking for, he could, he could quit this and make suggestions and get us a draft back. I'm not for holding things up and having another meeting. We can do that. I would like to see another draft.
Madam Mayor, you had addressed Councilman Fleming's point on page sixteen, the working style, bullet point three, the collaborative approach to working with the Board of Governance as opposed to city council is a, is an established known indicator instead of calling city council a Board of Governance.
And leave that, what about citizens?
You can still leave that in there, but again, the idea is that you always have a Board of Governance that you're...
It could be the Board of Governance. Nonparticular.
Just so that I am sure about it, then, this one, the third bullet underneath working style, skills, knowledge, and abilities, would now read a collaborative approach to working with the Board of Governance and citizen groups while attending to the separate roles of policy and administration. And then, Madam Mayor, were there changes to the first bullet under working style, skills, knowledge, and abilities? Instead of citizens at City Hall, did we say that that should be the community? So it would read accustomed to a community role as, as leader and participant in community affairs, a person who establishes positive welcome communications with the community?
Sure. Yeah. And then we've worked bullet point under that same kind of thought process, a thorough approach to examining alternatives and presenting well-documented recommendations to high-level management rather than elected officials. I mean, if someone is used to examining alternatives with high-level management, it would be just as likely that they would work with elected officials.
Maybe use the same language, governance board.
Board of Governance. I like what, come on. To the Board of Governance, is that okay?
Does that work?
The Board of Governance, is that okay?
And I'll read it again, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. A thorough approach to examining alternatives and presenting well-documented recommendations to the Board of Governance, including explanation of those alternatives, pros and cons, a person who is nevertheless decisive when necessary and appropriate.
Well, again, the Board of Governance is, is a, is a public arena kind of a concept. High-level management means that they would have the, the working style, skills, knowledge, and ability when working with high-level management.
I think usually the board of directors of a, of a business, they're sometimes called Board of Governments. I, I think it, I think it's interchangeable, I think, usually.
Because most CEOs report to a board of directors or something, a board of governance or something, or stockholders, something.
Key stakeholders.
Yeah, key stakeholders.
What about in the fifth one that Councilman Fleming was wondering if we could maybe tweak a little bit, just take out council members and put board members. So a relationship builder with staff members, board members, community...
Board members, community groups.
Why not just a relationship builder with skill in helping to build a, a relationship, a community relationship?
If you use board members, you probably don't want to follow it by boards right after it.
No, yeah, just...
Just leave out the board.
Staff members, board members.
Unless it was committees.
Well, you've got committee groups, committees. What are you thinking?
I'm saying we're, we're going to replace council members with the word board members. We've got boards following it, which tends to make you think it's the same thing.
I, I thought that you were eliminating boards and just making it word numbers.
Okay, you eliminated it there. Yeah, right there.
Those are two, two separate issues. One, we're talking about us as a governing body, and the other, we're talking about zoning board and so on, right?
Yeah, sure. DDA or anybody.
I think that would just include everybody.
Well, that's why I'm saying if we just have a relationship builder in general, that states exactly what we're looking for. A relationship builder skilled in helping to build, and again, you repeat relationships or build a community, community relationships, a relationship builder skilled in helping to develop community relationships.
Actually, I think we should just take out that whole second sentence.
I agree. Relationship builder, staff members, board members, community groups, and other government agencies. It empties on relationship. Why do you guess? Getting close.
Consensus on that, and so then it would read the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph under working style, skills, knowledge, and abilities, a relationship builder with staff members, board members, community groups, and other government agencies.
I think it's restrictive, but everyone else seems to like it, so it's good of me.
I think it'd be okay.
Well, I think it would be okay if it was just a relationship builder, style of management, a relationship building style of management.
That's the point you're trying to get across, you've got to be a relationship.
Right.
And you can say all you want and this thing, and everybody comes forward, it's going to be a relationship builder.
Absolutely.
I don't care what, they're a relationship builder. If they're not, everybody's going to be a salesperson, because you're not, not going to make it.
So what's our decision?
I like what Lori...
I like what Lori had.
What was? A relationship builder with staff members, board members, community groups, and other government agencies.
Doing what I hate to do, but we'll get it right. And Dane, I like Dane's suggestion, depending on where, where they are publishing and what the costs are, and if anybody has something else, I think you should feed it, but realize there's a cost to it.
Yeah, any, any...
I haven't given a lot of thought.
I think cranes is very expensive.
It is, it is, and, but, again, if that's what you're looking for, that may be something that council decides that, that it's worth the expenditure to get candidates from there.
Wall Street Journal, maybe better.
So, so, so we're investigating cranes, Wall Street Journal, Department of Defense, or any of the individual branches of the, of the military.
If you ask him, you know, through his experience, whereas he had some success getting, getting in touch with the private sector and the public, you know, this, this guy has way more experience than we do.
I'll ask him to do a report to all of you on that.
That would be great.
Perfect. I know the Wall Street Journal, you can advertise regionally, but is there a difference between electronic advertising and print advertising in terms of the cost?
Generally, there is, yes. Do we think we have a consensus then on the, the items, the position profile as it has been amended?
Yes.
Something better about it.
I will, if you have specific grammatical things that you wanted to point out to me, I'm happy to take all of those. I don't know that we need all of council to make grammatical changes. I will not change the substance in any way, shape, or form, but if you wanted to point out some of those grammatical things to me, I'm happy to pass that along. And then we will get this posted immediately, but it will be an agenda item for the next meeting, again, in addition to the report from Mr. Robinson, that we'll talk about different options for advertising. Mayor, may we just talk a little bit about what Mr. Culpepper, we did have a proposal from a company that had worked in Auburn Hills before, and one of the things that I thought was particularly interesting is that they, they do kind of an analysis of your finalist candidates, like a testing kind of thing, and I know that Mr. Culpepper has experienced that and may be able to shed some light on that, but that's something that you may wish to entertain. Another great thing that they were proposing, and I think that this would be very helpful to council, is instead of council members doing the interviewing, it is a panel of persons who are interviewing all of the finalist candidates, and the council members are watching so that the council members are able to really listen to what is, is being said, and you're, you're having a panel that, that are asking the questions of all of the candidates. I thought that that might be something that you might want to consider, because a lot of times it's difficult to come up with questions. Sometimes you're focused on the questions and you're not able to really get to hear what all of the things are that the, that the candidates are, are saying. So, so that's a possibility. As far as the public input, I'm not sure what you want to do with getting public input. I'm not sure how much, not sure what you want to do with the search process, and if you had any direction, I'd be happy to, to take that back.
Do we have any costs associated with that panel approach? It sounds interesting to me for us to be able to listen completely and not worry about asking questions and answering them.
Well, the panel approach is a concept that I think we'd be, we would be pretty much handling. They wouldn't be doing much more than giving us instructions on, on how to do that, but they did have some additional evaluation materials or abilities. Those additional abilities are interviewing people from a psychological point of view as well as some written testing. This will only be the, the final group of people where it actually ends up in a certain amount of, a degree of certainty, whether they're trying to pull something over on us or not, that's integrated into the testing process. And when they're finished, they have a product that says, this person is what you're looking for, or they are a snake oil salesman, or this person seems to be a little weak in this area, strong over here, maybe you'll have a balance. They're, they're able to break out all these nuances, so it's just not the personality that's coming across the table. That person who can fool the group in an interview can't fool the test. I've seen this done several times. It, it just works, it's very reliable.
When, when you were applying to be the city manager in Auburn Hills, did you go through that process or you've seen that process?
We, we used it because one, when I, the, one time when I was just filling in, the person we hired pulled one over on us. It cost as much money to get rid of him as a whole year's worth of pay. And from that, the council became very, very leery and started searching for some other mechanism when they discovered that this company could do this. The current manager after me was hired with this system, and he is still there, four and a half years, and they're still happy with him. So that, there's no bit of proof in the pudding there. I wasn't hired under those kinds of things. I was there and they didn't want to have more bad press, so they just said, we'll hire you, we think you're okay. So, didn't do any of that stuff.
Same question. This analysis or whatever, is that then given to city council or, I mean, is it provided to us?
Well, it, it can be all provided to you in the study session, and then Lori and I could look it over and probably Peggy to interpret it for you, because it is, it's a bit complex. It starts at one level and it kind of drills down in that information. And trying to read it over yourself, you may just be overwhelmed.
So they pick the final candidate for you then?
No.
What do they do?
They come back with a report that indicates this candidate, these candidates are suitable. They're within a range of suitability or they're not. Hopefully, when you get down to the last three or five, you'll have a, a degree of suitability for these folks, but it'll give you ranges, they'll be at the far end of the range, middle of the range, or they'd show their weaknesses and strengths, and you can pick from that.
And also, one of the things, if you get it before the interviews, it will also enable you to focus in on some of those areas that might be weaknesses, perceived weaknesses.
The panel could be a good idea, but who would be on this panel? Who would, I mean, where would we pick them from and would we have an opportunity to, to make follow-up questions?
Yes, you would, and, and I did, actually, Mr. Culpepper doesn't know this, but they would be willing to have one of their persons through on this panel, and then you would need to have, perhaps Mr. Culpepper would be, perhaps Ms. Sears would be on the panel. Persons that generally have a lot of hiring experience or a lot of interviewing experience. I was particularly impressed with the person from the Metascope, who is the, the company that had made this proposal. I think she would be a very tough questioner. I think that she can get away with asking questions, again, within the bounds of legality. You don't want to ask any of those impermissible questions that, that you can't ask, but that she would be honed in to using the testing and asking questions that were specifically pointed out as weaknesses through the testing process. She, she would be probably very attuned to doing that. Councilman Slater?
Could you give us kind of a report on this or something, the costs associated with it? So we could look it over and, you know, kind of what it's all about.
And, yeah, I, I know that, that testing is $385 per, per assessment, so if you have finalists, if you have five finalists, you multiply that by, by the, yeah, by the five finalists.
Where does this fit in with the Mercer Group's analysis and presentation?
The Mercer Group will not do this specific type of testing. The Mercer Group is really kind of getting the candidates, they will make recommendations, they will do the backgrounds and everything like that. This is just a supplemental to what the Mercer Group is doing.
Should we just maybe the last five candidates that they bring?
Right. Did we ask three, five, whatever you end up with?
I agree with Councilman Slater, we need to see what the cost is, you asked that mayor, the cost is and so forth, and would we be able to feed questions to this group prior to the interview?
Absolutely.
Come with a list of questions we, and maybe each one of us has, they were to ask each candidate.
I think it's a good question.
Are we talking about two?
Are we talking about two different companies? One that's providing the interview panel background and the people to do that, and then a different company that's doing psychological testing and providing us results? Two different companies?
No, it's the same company.
Okay.
It's the same company, and the interviewing panel, again, Mr. Culpepper is correct in that you don't need to use them. They have offered that, I believe the cost was, I think, $4,000 for a full day. Half a day would be half of that, to have one of the persons serving on an interview panel, but you may also accomplish the same thing by having Mr. Culpepper and Ms. Sears and somebody else who is very in tune with interviewing questions and things. And absolutely, you would have, certainly you're going to have an opportunity to have a meet and greet of some sort with the candidates. I'm assuming that you would want to have some sort of a meet and greet and also provide an opportunity for the residents to meet with the candidates. I'm assuming that you're going to want that, and so certainly you could have some of your individual questions answered in that form as well as providing questions to the panel.
But initially, when the Mercer Group talked to us, they were going to do some sort of a psychological test of some sort, is that not at all the case? Maybe I read it in one of the many brochures from one of the other companies too, but...
Yeah, I will review that again, but I don't think that that's one of the things that the Mercer Group had put in their proposal. I'll verify that, of course, but I don't think that the Mercer Group had put that in there.
Any other discussion? Councilman Slater?
Lori, could you also, who's used them in the past and stuff like that?
I can have them present at the next meeting too, if, I think that she would be willing to do that, if that's something the council would like.
They work mostly in the private sector.
Yeah, but I, you know, is this like a sole service issue, you know? Do we have to look at some other issues?
Well, yeah, I mean, that certainly is an issue, but I think because they have done it in Auburn Hills, and I don't know if there are other companies out there that would do this, the same thing, I just don't know that.
It's also professional service. It's a professional service, so it falls in a different realm.
Okay.
If you come in to do a presentation, I wonder if we could have some materials before, a couple days before, to be able to read up on it before we see the presentation?
Yeah, if there's interest, I certainly will have them here, perhaps if you come to our next council meeting.
This isn't something we have to decide right now.
We're supposed to listen to anything, but...
Maybe cost first, so we know what's going to fit in there.
Yeah, again, $385 is what they said for each candidate for the testing, and then for a full day of interviewing for one person, it'd be $4,000. Half of that if it's a half a day, which, again, if you're probably going to be a full day.
Testing is no problem.
I used to sell franchises, and we did personality testings, and we would submit them to a company, and it was just, it was almost like infomercials where they had the person tell your future, you know, this person works well under pressure unless faced with extreme pressure. You know, it was real, you know.
Circular, yes.
Right, exactly. So that's my only reservation, I don't, maybe it's improved in the last 12 years, but...
Some great testing. Can't trick it.
Mayor, the other thing, we're really going to need to move pretty quickly for interviewing dates, and so August is hopefully, it's going to need to be very quickly, so if you could all look at your calendars and give me your available dates, late July, early August, that would be very helpful, and then we can try and figure out maybe some potential dates for doing the interviews.
Late July is the earliest, I mean...
Yeah, because you're...
I mean, that's...
Right, I know, that's, I'm thinking it's going to be August.
I'm thinking early August.
Thinking it's early August, but I'm always...
So the first and second week of August, is that...
Yeah, probably. And in the past, we had done interviews on Saturdays, so I don't know if that's something that you're willing to do, but that's something that we did in the past interviewing cycle.
Do it so.
Yeah.
Does that conclude our study session? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.